I can't believe that.
No, I will.
It's on that Thursday.
I'll see this. Yeah, we got it. It's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay, well.
We're on.
It really did.
We're on.
It's right out there.
Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting for the city of Lenore for Tuesday, March the 4th, 2025. We glad you're here. Thank you for joining us tonight. We have several things to take care of. As we normally do, we'll start in a few minutes with our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance to our country. But as we go to that, let me first start with a couple of things from our prayer list. If you will, please keep a former recreation director here, Rob Winkler, and his wife Elizabeth in your thoughts and prayers. Elizabeth's mother passed away last week, and we want to think about them and please pray for their family. Also, Bobby White. Bobby was a former county manager here in Caldwell County and was our EDC guy for so many years and helped us with so many things. Bobby's wife, Alice, passed away also last week, and we want to keep Bobby and his family in our thoughts and prayers as well. And also continue praying for Terrence Banner as he continues to recovery. I hope everything is going well. If we have any updates on that from anyone. John, you know? Great. Good news to hear. But please continue to pray for he and his family. Also, a couple of congratulations in order from the past week. Our LA Dyser Award winners from for Caldwell County, Helen Hall. Of course, we all know Helen, a former school board and teacher and educator and so many great things. With Helen was the women's winner. And Jerry Church, former manager at Granite Falls, also worked for Brawl Hill Industries for many years and well-known in the community. Jerry was the male LA Dyser winner. And we also want to honor Sylvia Green. Sylvia was honored with the Caldwell Visionary Award that night. Very special night for that. We miss Sylvia quite a lot, but her daughter and family, they did a great job with that. And we were very proud of all that Sylvia did and lived for while she was here. So, great awards that night as we move forward. And also one last one, our new chancellor at Appalachian State, Heather Norris, was named this week as the new chancellor at Appalachian State University, and we're all very excited about that. She's a fine leader, has been great. The students actually love her. She gets out into the community with them and is quite well-known. And we are honored that Heather will be in Hickory and Boone as the new chancellor. And our city attorney has arrived. It's good to see. Will Sparks is with us.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Glad you got here. We haven't done anything bad yet, so that's a good thing.
All right. We're off to a good start.
Welcome. Glad to have you here.
Yes, sir.
On that. So, those things we'll take, all we'd think about tonight, just wanted to let you know that. Let's go to our title. A moment of silence and our pledge. Thank you. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight, we start off with a very special recognition on behalf of the customer service team. Tonight, we would like to recognize and present a very special certificate to Mr. Dustin Jones for great service. This will be for eight hours off with pay for providing exceptional service beyond measure. Dustin's nomination was chosen as the most deserving nomination for 2024. And here's our leaders of our customer service team.
Dustin?
Dustin's what I have.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
For a second, I thought I heard Justin. Sorry.
No, I said Dustin.
He already has the ticket, by the way. So, this is just a recognition.
Good, okay.
That's what I just said. I'm like, did you bring the ticket? Because I forgot. So, I'm Crystal. I'm with the customer service team. I've been the co-chair since October, and I work at Lenore Police Department. I have been there for two years. And of course, you guys already know Joshua. So, the customer service team wanted me to explain to you what the golden ticket awards were. They are a way to recognize and reward employees who exhibit service beyond measure in carrying out day-to-day activities in their jobs. Employees who receive a golden ticket will know that their hard work is being appreciated, and they have the opportunity to win time off with pay. If you see a coworker going above and beyond the call, please submit a golden ticket, and the customer service team will recognize their work. So, our annual winner is going to be Dustin Jones. He's with the, what is his?
Public Works Vehicle Services Division.
So, one afternoon, one of the officers, Officer Powell, came to me and shared with me his appreciation for Dustin. He said that he had arrived at the garage because one of his headlights was out, and Dustin happened to be locking up the garage for the day. Officer Powell happened to be on night shift that afternoon, and so he needed his headlight to be working. I encouraged Officer Powell, after hearing some of the officers, they kind of have like a debrief, like a briefing in between shift change. Some of the officers had expressed that Dustin, yeah, their appreciation that Dustin's always helpful and always kind. Officer Powell said, "I pulled into the city garage as the garage had already closed. As I pulled up, Dustin was the only employee and was walking out, getting ready to lock the door. I told Dustin my headlight had went out, and that I could come back another time. Without hesitation, he set down his personal belongings and said, 'We could take care of it real quick.' Dustin was already past the end of his shift and had already worked a long day. Dustin jumped right in and took care of my headlight and did not complain the whole time. Dustin's a great guy, and this is not the first time he's went above and beyond. Dustin is a great employee, and I believe he showed his dedication and willingness to serve others before himself." Being this wasn't the first time the officers had talked about how Dustin had treated them well. I feel like going the extra mile, he exemplified his commitment and readiness to assist others. Dustin is truly an exceptional employee, and his actions reflect his dedication to serving those around him. And it's true, whenever you encounter Dustin, he always has a smile on his face. He's probably over there smiling right now. Okay? On that day, Dustin provided these customer service keys. Key one, by being personable. Key two, by being proactive. Key four, by showing professionalism. Key five, by being timely and efficient. Key six, by showing teamwork. And key seven, by giving equitable service.
And just for a little bit more background, so employees, we, the customer service team is made up of members from various departments. Think we have maybe like 11 members right now. But when employees submit a ticket, you know, after the first quarter, the customer service team will vote on who we think is the most deserving for that quarter. Then we'll have the second, then the third, and then the fourth. And then at the end of, you know, at the beginning of the new year, we'll vote on those four and decide which one was the most deserving. And that's how we get the annual winner. So.
Good. Bring him up.
Do the employees submit the nomination? Do they do it by email, or do they?
We have a form online that they can submit, and they can, some departments have like paper tickets, but most of the time, it's just.
It's a website. I do the new hire orientations. So, I go through a list, a slideshow, and I actually give them the website. You can go get your employee handbook. You can submit a golden ticket award. You can see updated employees, like new hires and stuff. Joshua keeps up with all that. Yeah.
I just appreciate you.
Come on up. Don't be shy.
Please.
I appreciate you, your hard work, and I appreciate you representing vehicle services accordingly. So, congratulations. I'm glad it was you.
See that smile? He always has that smile. And I don't, I don't drive my vehicles over to the garage, but I can tell you every time I've had a, an encounter with Dustin, he's smiling.
Would you like the same?
Congratulations.
Would you like the same?
Sure. Come on up, Dustin. I truly want to thank everyone. I mean, truthfully. Beth, I've been with the city for a little over a year now, and it has been my pleasure. It is actually the first I've ever had that I've honest to God, just, I love being where I'm at. The atmosphere is phenomenal. I want to do my best every day. And it's enjoyment to come to work, truthfully. And to have a boss lady like Beth, I couldn't, I couldn't ask for a better boss, truthfully.
Congratulations.
Dustin, thank you so much. We appreciate what you do. Thank you for working with the city and, and smiling all the time. That's certainly a great trait. And.
They say if you love your job, you'll never work a day in your life.
Oh, no. Shoot. She asked, does anybody want to work the snow? I'm just like, shoot, I'll spend the night. I'm in.
Josh, why don't we get a picture of the council and the customer service team?
Congratulations.
Yes, your job come in too.
Last time I did this, I got cold. I'm standing with you all. I'm this kid.
Yeah, my wife and kids.
Yeah. What is going to reach your family?
My wife, Allison, Natalie, the little girl, and Noah. He's hot.
Glad to have you always with. Thank you.
Yeah, right, yeah, right there.
I appreciate that. All right. All right, we'll do a couple without a flash.
One, two, three, cheese.
All right, a couple with a flash, which hopefully works this time. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Thank you.
I won't have to get your name, Crystal.
Sure. She takes advantage of that all the time.
All right, you ready? Yeah, you can't hide.
Heard rumors of that.
That you pushed her down the stairs. How lame. You feel good about it?
I don't feel good. Should ask me to pray for her. Yes, you should. Because I'm a terrible nurse. Or you, one or the other. Again, thank you, Dustin. We appreciate what you do. And, you know, our service beyond measure is one of the greatest things we've done in this city is being a part of that and putting that program in years ago. And our employees do such a great job of being a part of it. Thank you for the customer service team and, and the golden tickets and picnics and all the other good things that you plan to, to make things happen here in this city of Lenore. Very honored. All right, our next thing on the agenda is our Lenore Police Department 2024 Annual Report. The Honorable Chief of Police, Brent Phelps, will present this to us tonight. You may not need it.
All right. So apparently, this is pretty popular. I've had two department heads call me and about three corner me as I came in, all of them wanting to know how long I was going to take tonight. So, I told them we'd be out of here by 8:30 and not to worry about it. But for the second time, I will go through it. You've got the information on our annual report in, in your packet. But there's always a few things we like to talk about on camera and just go over with council for our year. We had a lot go on last year. It was a very busy year, very productive year. Just some of the numbers for the police department. Typically, every year with, with our numbers, when we look at our data, you're going to see a rise and fall every year, kind of an ebb and flow. This year's kind of no, nothing really out of line, a few increases, a few decreases, nothing really major swing in number-wise. There was one area, we'll talk about it, probably the most significant decrease, and that was a good thing. In our crimes against persons, we had a 4% increase. That was 388. Those are your, obviously, your crimes against people. The good thing about that is we had zero murders in 2024, no homicide. So, that's always a positive stat. In our category for crimes against society, we had a little bit of an increase, but the number's still fairly consistent from 2023. You have, you know, some of your disruptions, your civil disruptions, your other things in there. Crimes against property, there was an increase in some of our property crimes, but those numbers still fairly consistent with, with extra years. We broke those down from larceny, larceny from motor vehicles, and then larceny of motor vehicle parts. And you can see in the report, some of those numbers fairly flat, a little bit of a reduction, and then a little bit of an increase in, in those numbers. And very consistent for our years. In the annual report, we compare the years for the last four years, and so you can look at that. Okay, what was 2023? What was 2022? 2021 was a weird year because we were coming out of 2020, and our numbers kind of were all over the place. But in our calls for service, we, we did have an increase in our animal complaints. I'm sure there's not been any council members or manager or myself that have ever gotten a call from a resident about dogs at large or dogs barking or, or any of that. It, it does happen. But we, we, we had an increase there. We try to manage those the best we can with, with our patrol division. That, that falls under ordinance. And so for us to cite somebody, we have to observe it. Well, you know, when somebody calls and says, hey, my neighbor's dog is in my yard, you know, by the time an officer gets there, if it's not still in their yard, we didn't observe it. We still try to make contact with the residents and, you know, inform them of a potential violation and have them keep their, their animals up. But it is something that we deal with, and I know council gets some calls on that from time to time. Our civil disturbances was a slight decrease, very consistent number-wise. Domestics were pretty flat from the last year, fairly consistent. Our involuntary commitments, that's the highest it's been in four years. It was fairly consistent with 2023 numbers, but that's still, to me, that goes into kind of where we are in our society with mental health and some of the struggles just in our community and statewide and nationwide. For years, we would run about 100. And six, seven, eight years ago, it started creeping up. 2020 hit, and we saw a big spike in those commitment numbers. But we, we track them and, and keep up with them because they are things we deal with. Probably our biggest win, if you're looking just at data, is in our overdoses. We had 111 overdoses, and that was actually a 21% decrease from 2023. There was a 26% decrease in our opioid-induced overdoses. And so, you know, in talking to the narcotics guys, my narcotics investigators and the supervisors in our narcotics unit are going to tell you, it's because we've been, you know, working hard and making arrests and really focusing on that. And I do think that's, that's some of it. I do think that's a part of it. Because when we see, and when we're able to have a big shipment, especially of fentanyl, and we get that off the street, we will see some of those overdoses go down. And so, we do think that's, that's part of it, probably multiple factors. But all in all, it's still a good thing for our community that there was that much of a decrease. We're still using Narcan. As of currently, we've not had to purchase any as a city. And so, you know, we're, our patrol folks are using that as often as they need to. There may come a time for the department where the ability to get it from some of the sources, from the Harm Reduction Coalition out of Raleigh and some of the other places, and those, some of those free supplies may run out at some point, and the department may have to decide whether we, we're going to continue to purchase that. But, I mean, we, we feel like in, in the reports, there's approximately 49 people that we feel like are alive today because our officers got there first. We're able to use that and bring them back. And then EMS got there and began treatment. So, it's, it is an important thing.
Chief, do you think the Caldwell Restart Program plays a role in that as well?
I, I think, I think that's, that is a piece of it. I do. I appreciate you bringing that up. Restart has been very beneficial with our patrol officers. I forget the number. The major might can tell me. I mean, they've got a list. I think it was eight or 10 last year that our patrol folks had been dealing with. And because of the interaction between our patrol officers and restart, there was eight or 10 folks that they were able to get to a treatment facility for help. And so, that program is, is working, and our, our officers are working with them daily. And it's a good resource for us and for our community. Not a lot of communities have that. And so, I do think that plays a part in it. Some of our other charges, quickly, just, you'll see the numbers. We had over, you know, 2,600 felony and misdemeanor charges, 364 drug charges, 96 alcohol violations. In the report, it breaks down what those are. In our traffic, we had a little over 1,000 crashes in the city. That's fairly consistent. There was actually a reduction. In 2023, we had 1,200. So, it dropped some. But a lot of times, we'll kind of fluctuate between 1,000 and 1,200 from year to year. Had over 3,100 traffic stops. And then our citations and warning citations. You know, we, we, we don't get a free toaster if we write three tickets this Friday or, or anything like that. A lot, a lot of the public thinks there's incentives, but there's not. But we, there is a correlation. A lot of times, if you look in years where the number of citations we've issued have dropped, a lot of times, our accidents go up. And so, if, if we're being effective, looking where we're having crashes and trying to slow the public down before they get in those heavy, dense populated areas, the, the opportunity for accidents to be reduced is there. And so, you know, folks think we just go out and try to write tickets wherever. We actually look at our crash data and try to do our enforcement based on where we're having accidents. Sometimes it's, you know, we, we get a complaint of, you know, somebody speeding on my street, and we'll go to a neighborhood. Most of the time, we end up making everybody in the neighborhood mad when we do that. But most, most of our citations, when we're doing radar enforcement, is based on our crashes in those locations. Other numbers, the recovered stuff for the investigators, always working. Ton of work in every one of those cases, ton of paperwork when they're putting those cases together for court. Over $269,000 in recovered stolen property. That includes some vehicles, over $4 million worth of narcotics seized. And cash and property was almost $500,000. So, those folks working very hard. Our communication center, they processed over 40,000 CAD calls last year. That was a lot. You'll see in a little bit, I'll talk a little bit about Helene, but there was over 1,000 calls just with Helene in those couple of days. This communication center is a very busy, busy area. Ms. Crystal can attest to that. Our patrol division had over 24,000 police calls for service. That was fairly consistent with our calls in 2023, pretty close, a slight increase. Then our house checks and our call follow-ups, and then some of our criminal investigation cases. Our investigators looked into over 1,500 cases. They performed 62 search warrants and did 16 knock and talks. We talked at the retreat about nuisance and beautification of the city. Detective Hartley had over 215 nuisance cases last year. That was the most out of the last four years. He's really stepped that up. Had 111 owner-abated properties and 33 city-abated properties. And all of those numbers were the highest they've been in the last four years. He's really been, you know, we started two years ago, putting that information in our quarterly reports with trying to show maps and the things he's working on. You know, we, we probably are getting close to hitting that spot for us where we've hit the level of our ability with the current manpower we have. We have begun to have some discussions about the future and what if, if, if as a department we need to do more, you know, what that may look like and, you know, trying to figure out resources and what that looks like. But that'll be for future discussions. But really proud of the, the, the work Detective Hartley's done with that. You see this chart? It's in the report. This, we capture these numbers. We report them to the state, which is requested. This is not requested for us to release to the public. We feel like it's, it's good. It's being transparent. This is our enforcement activity by race. And so, it's broken down by arrest, traffic stops, use of force, and then those categories. What, what you're looking for here is you're looking for your numbers to be fairly consistent or somewhat close to your demographics. And so, where you would feel like you had problems, if, if you had, say, 75 to 80% of one demographic, and you were way out of scheme with, with another demographic. And so, our numbers, we're, we're pretty happy with, are very consistent with our demographics. And we'll talk a little bit about use of force as we go forward. But we feel like that's a good thing for us to just to, to, to put out there, to go over, to be transparent about. And most of the time, the more forthcoming you are with information, you don't take as many. It doesn't, it doesn't appear, not that anybody would not trust the police, but the more transparent we can be as a police department, I think that helps with community relations. And so, that's part of, we've been doing that a long time. In our police activity, our citizen contacts, I'm going to talk about use of force just briefly because that's a hot topic with law enforcement nationwide. So, in our annual report, we can document over 27,000 police interactions. That's our police calls for service, and then our off-duty. And you'll see in a minute those numbers. But we know that number's way more than that. If there's six officers working at a Highbritten High School football game, we count that as six, six officers at one event. Well, how many citizen contacts did those six officers have during that three hours at the football game? How many citizen contacts did the 10 officers working the BlackBerry Festival? How many citizen contacts did they have? So, we know that number is, is very low, but we can point to those numbers and say, this is where these numbers come from. So, out of that, almost 28,000 citizen contacts, we had 38 use-of-force incidents. And those obviously were captured. And so, when you break that down, one, that was a reduction from the year before, which is a good thing. But that's .14 of 1% out of all those interactions. And so, I, I don't know what nationwide, how you would calculate that. But it, I do feel strongly our, our officers and our community, use of force is a reaction. We are, we are responding to somebody that should be following commands, and they are not. And at that point, we have to intervene and use some type of force to control somebody for their safety, our safety, the public's safety. But, you know, that is a very, very low number for all the citizen interactions we have on a, on a yearly basis. And so, it's, you know, if you just look at 38, you think, 38? Man, that's more than one a month. that's more than one a month. Well, when you, you, that's why I feel like it's important to understand what that thirty-eight represents.
Will you define use of force? Because that's a...
Yeah, use of force, in our, in our, in our policy, we have a use-of-force continuum. And that continuum is our options for the force that we're going to use. Some of force may be verbal commands. If I tell the manager, you know, you know, put your hands up, drop the weapon, whatever that is, that I am still giving him a command and that is a use of force. Actually, an officer showing up in uniform is a level of force. Now, we don't fill out a report for every time I show up in, in uniform, but if I have to take some type of enforcement action where it's soft hands and that's where I've had to wrestle somebody, we have what we call hard hands, that's where I've had to strike somebody. Of course, we have tasers, people have heard of that, handcuffs, batons, our canines are in there, and then of course, our firearms are lethal force. And all of those are at officers' discretion to use under the circumstances. And a lot of times, we, we see where officers had the ability to use a higher level of force and chose not to, trying to de-escalate. And that's a very fine line for an officer. That's what we want. We want them to de-escalate and not have to use force if possible. But we also, sometimes we don't want things to get out of hand and, and get away from us and somebody get hurt, us or them. And so it's, you talk about things as a chief that keep you up at night, that's, that's one of them. So. Real quickly, some of our police numbers. I can see my department heads tapping their watches, so I'm, I'm getting, let's keep moving. This is our off-duty hours. So we had over three-thousand off-duty hours for the fairgrounds, for some of the apartments that have us work off-duty in security. But it equiv, it's equals to almost one and a half officers last year. We have that company, Extra Duty Solutions, manage that. That has been a good thing for us. It takes a ton off of Captain Stillwell, our support services captain, in managing it. And, and so it's, but it's, there's a lot. And, and we don't always fill it. There's some that they request and we, we just don't have enough people to work it. Quickly, other stats. We did fifteen ABC permits. We did thirty-three backgrounds on potential employees, had a hundred-and-twenty-one Crime Stoppers tips. We've got over fifty-three-thousand pieces of evidence in our evidence room that our evidence tech is responsible for. That's another thing that keeps you up at night. When, when your evidence room gets messed up, people don't get fired, people go to prison. And my retirement plan is not to wear orange. And so that, that, that has to be done in a very specific way and it's a very important thing for an agency. Our training hours were a little over ten-thousand. And then our professional certificates that are awarded by Training Standards, the intermediate and advanced, we've got thirty-six officers that have those and that's sixty-nine percent of our staff. For years through the league, we would get a seven percent discount for those certificates. That is, the league is discontinuing that practice, that's going away. We, we have done the risk review and because of that, we already get a fifteen percent discount in our police liability. And they're also going to, if departments go and become state accredited, they'll get an additional five percent on top of that. I know the department is, is interested in looking at that. So right now we're a fifteen percent reduction and we potentially, once we got accredited, we, we could get another five. But. The hurricane, obviously, everybody in western North Carolina realizes it was an event of our lifetime. We are still fortunate here in Lenore, North Carolina. It was a lot worse west, but I was very proud of, of our officers, of our firemen and city workers. When, when it was going on, we responded to over a thousand calls. We didn't have the flooding, obviously. We had trees down, power outages. We had officers and firefighters cutting their way to houses to get people out of houses that had had trees falling on it, you know, cutting trees out of the road so we could help folks that, you know, had lost power and now their oxygen, oxygen machine wouldn't work to get medical aid to them. And so it was, it was an event I won't forget, but we were very fortunate here. Some places are still, they'll never be the same. We did, out of that, when that hit on Friday, by Saturday evening, we had started to send some officers to Marion and to Boone, talk to those chiefs. And they were in worse shape than we were. And so just under mutual aid, we went ahead and started sending them bodies to help. And then we started working out the FEMA stuff and the, all the paperwork on the backside. But we, we were glad to help. One of the things out of that that was powerful for me is we, we had, and I'm sure other departments are the same way, but we had employees that had damage at their home, had no power at their home, and they're coming in to provide a service here in the city. And that's that level of dedication to your job that a lot of careers don't have. And so I, I was very proud of our men and women during that event. Other things throughout last year, we, we continued to work on the critical incident stress management team. Lieutenant Baumgartner leads that for us. They had thirteen group interventions and debriefs for critical incidents. Two of those were at our place. Seven of the agencies within our area make that team up. And I'm, I'm proud of that team and what they do. And it's kind of cops helping cops get through traumatic incidents and, and it, and it's working. And Lieutenant Baumgartner does a great job with that. We, we had several big ticket items that, one we knew, we, we knew about, another one that caught me off-guard and, but thankfully with Mr. Hildebrand and Ms. Donna, we were able to work through it. We did upgrade all fifty-five of our body worn cameras to the newest version, was able to transition that to the cloud and storage. And then we're still in process with our mobile radios. All the radios are in and we're working on installation of those being upgraded for, before July one. So when the state BIPR requirements hit July one, we're, we're up and going. So pretty big ticket items for our department and infrastructure for the future. Three new K-9 officers. We, they are here, we're, they're in training this week, next week. And I can talk to Mr. Hildebrand, we can figure out when would be a good time. We're probably the next council meeting if y'all want. We, we, we're not going to bother you, Councilman Perkins, we're going to leave you alone. But we are ready to, to bring them and let council see them, doing something a little different with, with two of them. And we'll, we'll talk about that when we get there. We always use State Forthure money for that. I like to say our, our, our local drug dealers are helping us fund our K-9 program. So last year, another thing that was a first ever for us, I'm real proud of. Lieutenant Crisp led this and they're already working on it for this coming year. We transitioned our citizens' police academy to our first cadet academy, which was students. And so we had twenty-one youth that were involved and had a great week, even let the fire department guys be involved a little bit. You know, they, you know, they, they had to help out too. But no, they did. They, they got to interact with different departments, the fire department, EMS. They had a forest service helicopter come in and they had a good week. One of the highlights, I think, for that week was we had nine campers learn to swim. One of the days when we went out to the aquatic center and got in the pool, nine of those kids learned a life lesson on how to swim. And between us and the lifeguards, we, one of our officers got nicknamed Tugboat Kenny because his dog paddling across the pool and like four kids hanging on his back. But he, that was, that was something that we weren't expecting out of the week and just some really good, some good interaction with, with our students from our community. Other things accomplished, building, we replaced the last two air conditioners on top of the building. There's five up there, I believe. And with those last two, we were able to replace all the ones that were originally put in when the building was built. We've been working on that a little at a time. We knew we were going to have to replace one, didn't realize we were going to have to replace two this year. But we worked through the, the, the budget deal and, and figured that out and, and got that done. Obviously, the lounge was completed, y'all saw that. Did five more offices with new carpet. You know, really have been trying to work with council, given direction on our facilities, trying to do so much each year so it's not as overwhelming trying to redo your whole building at once. So we've been trying to stay at that and that, that's been good progress. The last several years, we've done a lot of things at the department, from out front to the training room. Purchased a new UTV for downtown parking and also really our greenways. It's a little smaller, it's a two-seater, it's got a bed area, dump bed area in the back, and it's a little easier to get around out on the greenway. Marshall had me out on it last week. We were going and checking the greenway and some of the sites where we've had some homeless issues. And it's visible. And so as that continues to get warmer weather, we'll be out there more. And so that's, that's a positive. Annual policy review, I won't read through every one of those, but we annually go over policy, tweak policy, change policy as, as laws change and guidelines change, we have to revise and change policy. And so obviously do that every year. Some of those are pretty big with, you know, firearms, use of force, pursuit, all those high liability areas, but to make sure we're, we're on top of those and our policies are staying up with our practices. Personally, man, I blew ten minutes way out of the water. Our personnel, we had ten employees leave last year for different reasons, two full-time officers. We, we hired two full-time, we hired five trainees. Out of the ten we hired, we lost ten. That's kind of that ebb and flow. That's a constant for us with trying to keep the people we have. And that's becoming harder. And as you'll see in a minute, I, I'll talk about it a little more, but this coming year and currently in twenty-twenty-five, you know, we, we know we've got some folks leaving with retirements. I jokingly say, you know, retirement is like a hurricane. It really shouldn't sneak up on you. You know it's coming. And we've been working hard to, to be prepared for those. And those give a lot of new opportunities for our staff. And so when you, with experience leaving, it also opens up opportunities for, for other people. In twenty-four, we had, we finally got an SRO in every single school in the city. That was a big win for us, working with the school system and the additional grant. It took us a little bit to get our elementary schools filled, but we got SROs in every one of them. Couple of the elementary SROs were able to get in Dare School, you know, start teaching Dare, we're going to get the others through there. And really excited about that because we, the county had had that a little before us and we, we wanted, we wanted to have a, an, an SRO in every single one of our schools. And so we got that accomplished and that's going well. Just future trends, I won't touch on every bit of this. The big takeaway here is recruitment and retention for the police department. It is, it's harder and harder to find people that want to serve others before serving theirself. And the number of people coming into law enforcement is not exceeding the number of people retiring and leaving. The last two years in the state have been that way. And so that is a constant for us, along with other law enforcement agencies across our The, another thing that is a part of that is North Carolina BLT changed. And it needed to change, it hadn't been updated since two thousand, but they had a major overhaul, but it increased by about thirty-six percent as far as the timing. So when somebody goes to BLT and we're having to hire more and send them, it, it extends that training time. And now by the time if we hire somebody, send them to BLT, they get out of BLT, we put them in field training, we're getting close to a year before they're on their own as an officer. And so it's just a huge turnaround. Some departments across the state are over-hiring when they know they have retirements coming. I have briefly touched on that and the manager said, you know, when you get full and, and you've got all your positions filled, we'll, we'll talk about over-hiring. And unfortunately, I, I've not been able to get to that place where I can come back to him and, and say, hey, I'm full, can I, can I over-hire with retirements coming? But we are working on it. And, and so it's just, it's, it's one of the challenges for us and for our future. I went longer than I was planning on it, but Major Wilson says I get long-winded, so sometimes that happens. But I, I am passionate about the department and the work. I get to stand up here in front of council and I go to community meetings, but it's our men and women that are out here every day, at night, on the weekends, sometimes dealing with very tough situations. And I, I'm proud of the work they do. And there's a lot of info in there. I'd be happy to take questions, but if you look at the report and you have a question, call me, shoot me an email.
I just have a rule.
Sure.
On the crash locations, I saw the number, but is there like a specific location that shows up?
In, in the report, we break down our top five crash areas. If you look at those in the report, the majority of our top five are on Blown Rock Boulevard. Normally, the, the one that is about every quarter at the heist is there at Hospital Avenue in three-twenty-one. There's things you can articulate to that. One, from the crossroads to about Walmart, that is where we have the highest amount of vehicles on a daily basis, day in, day out. And then you throw in different times of year, you put up an in-state North Carolina Chapel Hill Appalachian State football game in Boone, and we're going to have more traffic coming up three-twenty-one than normal. And so, you know, it, it, it's a busy area. And when, when you see our guys running radar, a lot of them, here's a trade secret for anybody listening at home, you'll see officers on three-twenty-one south and you'll see them kind of north. And part of that goal is to try to slow the public down before they get in that congested area. Because if they're going closer to the speed limit, if they have to react from somebody pulling out or somebody deciding to turn in, there's a better chance of, of them being successful and getting stopped than if they're going ten or fifteen miles over the speed limit. And so, but it, it, it is an area we have to focus on. Yep. Yeah, slow down.
Councilperson Rogers will help you with that.
Yeah.
Since she doesn't hold claims on her insurance.
That's right. That's right.
I just want to warn you.
Yeah. That's right.
Good report. It's good to see the reductions.
It is.
That shows the, the work that you guys are doing.
Yeah. Really, really, really fortunate for the staff we have and their dedication, really are.
Any other questions for Chief Thomas? Rapper Tom.
See, I knew, I knew.
Put that in there.
Yeah. I had like thirty slides and I cut it back to eighteen.
No, they were great. That was a great report. Thank you very much for, for that. Thank you for what you guys do every day for sure.
Thank you, Rapper.
And by the way, city manager did that, that, he's put me up to that.
Rapper loves that.
All right, good report. We'll move on then to, we do not have matters scheduled for our public hearings this evening. So I'll move to our consent agenda items. so we'll move to our consent agenda items. Tonight only has two, that's item A, our minutes from the city council meeting of Tuesday, February 18th, as submitted, and item B is an agreement with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, this is for stormwater partnership. This agreement's between the Western Piedmont Council of Governments and the City of Lenore for assistance in supporting the Western Piedmont Stormwater Partnership for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027, at a cost of $117,456. All right, I will open it up. Any, any questions or discussion or motion for our consent agenda items, please?
Make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through A and B as presented.
We have a motion for Councilmember Thomas to approve the consent agenda items A and B as presented. No other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that carries unanimously. That's seven. Councilmember Purdue is out of town traveling tonight, so. Thank you for that. All right, we'll move on then to requested petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, this is the time to do so on our agenda. Jennifer, always glad to have you here. Thank you for coming. Anybody else want to address the council? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on. We do not have reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
I'm mayor of council, a couple items for information this evening. The Fiddle's Regional Airport Authority will meet tomorrow at noon at the airport for their monthly meeting. The National League of Cities will have their Congressional Cities Conference in Washington on March 9th through the 12th. Councilmember Bill and myself will be attending that. The Main Street Conference is going to be held in Mooresville, those same dates. I know Brenda Floyd will be attending that with some other folks from, from Lenore. The ABC Board will meet on Thursday, March 13th, that'll be at 2 o'clock. The Leprechaun Leap 5K, 10K Road Race is going to be held on Saturday, March 15th, beginning at 10 a.m. at the Soccer Complex, and Mr. Sparks let Mr. Rohr know that, so he can sign up and get registered for that, if you would. And then lastly, the Parks Recreation Advisory Board will meet on Monday, March 17th at 6 p.m., and that's also St. Patty's Day, right? So they better wear green to that meeting.
I'll agree.
Other than that, that's all I have.
All right.
That's just questions.
Any questions of city managers or, or any of, any of our staff that's here? All right, any report from our city attorney's department tonight?
No, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you for being here tonight with us. Do not have a report from the mayor's office. We already talked about the, the events that have been going on lately with the Chamber Awards and the LA Dinosaur Awards, there were a lot of businesses that were honored and things honored at the Chamber Awards the other night, so hope if you see any of them, you will congratulate them for, for what they do in our community. And we hope we'll have a number of things continuing to move forward here in our community. Anything from any of our council members tonight? All right, hearing none. We stand adjourned.